He's the president of Historic Property Association, and he is with the Historic Survey. He's the lead on that. I don't know that he wants to really give some talk to us, but he's there to answer questions. Paul, would you come up?
Thank you, John. I'm gonna mess with his microphone. I'm Paul Weaver, 5 Milton Street, and I'm the president, as John said, of Historic Property Associates. There's an error of mission, John. You forgot about the Aistin Spudges, and they did a wonderful job converting that old high school to a very, I think, a very, very similar idea here. This is very, I think, sort of serendipitous that this project got started paralleling what you're trying to do here. And our company, about 30 years ago, did the original historic building survey in Crescent City and did the National Register nomination. And so we're updating it, and I think it's very timely. Your Blue Ribbon Committee is also known as, many of them, as the Historical Society, and we've already met with them. And this project was numero uno. This was really a very, very important priority. So, as I said, we're updating the survey. We're really gonna focus on this building, I think, because it's so important to the community. As it stands right now, part of it is a contributing building in the historic district, but we want to update that and make sure that the entire property is, again, and our speakers have said, what, money? And grants are important. Rick knows the state grant program very, very well. I've worked with it. My partner, Miss Jenny Wolfe, has served on the state grant committee. So one of the things we want to do is support you in any way with ideas about future funding. And again, I think the historic status of this building is an important hook, not only for grants, for charitable donations, that's another possibility. And I've also done a lot of my work, and I've actually worked longer than Rick Gonzalez, I have to confess, in sort of creative ways of bringing funding to this. I've done a number of schools, adapted use the South Jacksonville Elementary School, and also Spears's Far North is Richmond, Virginia. So we're here to support your efforts. It's very exciting. I think it's a great project. Not only is it historically significant, I told the air committee that I'm working with a setting in Crescent City. It's just incredible. We're really here to track it. So if you have any questions for me about the work we're doing, I'm very, very supportive of your efforts. And again, we're here to help you in any way. So thank you very much.
Okay. I know there are others who would like to speak, and this is your opportunity. Some of these people have...
I'm gonna go ahead. I do have some speakers. We had public comment at the end, but I'll go ahead and move it to the beginning. Since others have had an opportunity to speak, I may deference to them. If that's okay with you, Commissioner. Commissioner DeVito, did you have something you could say?
No. No, I think that's...
Okay. If that's okay with you, Mr. Noble? Is that okay with you, if I go ahead and... We've got other speakers.
Certainly, go ahead.
Okay. So there was Hank Keriko. I probably didn't say that correctly. If you would please state your name or address, if you will.
Good evening, Arnold Mayor and Vice Mayor and Commissioners and City Mayor. My name is Hank Keriko. I live at 512 Lemon Avenue over on Lake Stell. I'm also a retired Army Colonel. And when I was in the Army, they used to tell us, when you brief a general officer, you need to be brief, you need to be bright, and you need to be gone. So I'll try to do that tonight. But tonight, I represent the co-president of the Crescent City Plum Players, our theater group of performers here in the city. And I speak to implore you to pursue and deliver the Crescent City Cultural and Civic Center initiative as laid out by the Blue Ribbon Committee. Our theater group is nearly 10 years old. We hold a 501(c) nonprofit status. We're a voting member of the Crescent City Downtown partnership group. And our goals are to entertain and to educate and to make life better for the citizens in our area by bringing joy and laughter to the greater community. We've worked with the Putnam County School District already, and we've produced shows at the Miller Middle School Auditorium already. And we agree with the Blue Ribbon Committee that there's very little F, F, and E that will be required to adapt the mid-century historic auditorium into a quality performance venue. When we personally, our group has already invested $2,500. We cleaned all the seats in there, cleaned all the rugs in there, and we got the restrooms back to snuff. There are three main things that our theater group will do to strongly support the initiative. First, we will lead the way in developing and managing the performance arts centerpiece of this. And second, by what we do, we naturally attract visitors and we contribute to the economic vitality of the city and the restaurants in the area. And thirdly, we will eagerly share in the opportunity to help defray the overall expenses of the entire civic and cultural center. I'm not sure where that last utility report came from with the electrical costs, but in the Blue Ribbon Committee book, it says that the school district is currently spending $75,000 to maintain that facility, of which $50,000 was property and liability insurance, and $10,000 was cutting the grass and taking care of the buildings, and the rest was utilities. So, but anyway, regardless of what it is, we represent one tenant that will be there. And if you take an example, us doing one show a quarter, we usually have 100 people in the audience each night, usually a Friday, Saturday night, sometimes a matinee, we charge $30. It comes to $24,000 for four shows a year. And we have plans, we got put back with COVID, and we lost a lot of our players, but so we are rebuilding our team. But we have plans for comedy nights and improv and shows. If we have that performance arts center, there's just an endless amount of ideas that our crew has to go in there. But the key is, whatever we make, we'd be more than willing to share and take our burden of utilities and expenses. So we know this issue is like giving you all a bag of feathers and telling you to make a duck. But we just wanted you to know, we citizens, we have faith in you. We wholeheartedly support the preservation, acquisition, and adaption of the historic Crescent City school property. So thank you very much.
Hello, ladies and gentlemen. I'm Pat Maiden. I live at 202 Aleander Avenue. From 1948 to 1955, I went to school at that beautiful building. And at that time, the school was the hub of the town. Everything happened there, or Miller's Grocery Store, or People's Bank. And it was busy and booming. If we pass up this opportunity to turn that into the hub of our historic downtown, we will still be looking at Wetter Clark and Mount Dora and saying, golly, why didn't we do it? Here we are in the most beautiful physical setting imaginable, prettier than them even, and please, please give us this wonderful opportunity to turn Crescent City downtown, not now with the grocery store classes, but into a real town again. Thank you.
My name's Michael Frank Dunn. I'm at 83 Lake Shore Drive in Crescent City. Thank you for the opportunity to voice my opinion. I am total support of this effort to convert the new school to a city center that will just be a vibrant element in our community to rebuild back what it used to have, or what it used to be before I got here 10 years ago. So for those that don't know me, I'm a retired architect, and I've been here 10 years. And I've done at least a dozen different projects, pro bono for the city. And I'm willing to do whatever design, interior design, space planning, site planning, that the city may need pro bono. So you don't have to go out... You don't have to go out $200 per hour for a beautiful consultant. But I do that, and I would work with whoever, the Blue Ribbon Committee, who I've been in attendance with almost throughout their generation. And so I don't want to take up too much more time, so I just leave it at that. I totally support this, and I'll do whatever it takes. And I think we should capture this positive energy that we have in this room. As you can see, everyone's wearing blue. And that was to support the Blue Ribbon Committee. That's why we're in blue tonight, so you can see the solidarity we have here. And I think everyone stood up when asked. So thank you, and good luck on...
Kevin Jordan, 34 South Main. I didn't get the color of it, but I'm wearing blue. And I'm actually above like two, which doesn't help. I want to thank the city commission for pointing to the Blue Ribbon Committee for the second half, for so of its term. Of all the committees that I've served on over the years, coming from an academic background, I think I can safely say that this committee has worked with more focus and dedication than any other committee I've ever served with. The level of their effort and the productivity that they managed to muster in that brick of a report is humbling, to say the least. I think the operative word here is opportunity. What we have, and what you have before you, is an opportunity to revitalize the town from within, from downtown, instead of waiting for externally funded developers to chip away at outlawing agricultural properties, which they can pick up and develop cheaply. We can redefine the city's own character. And from my background as a biology professor, I would recommend we take a good look at ecotourism, which is a very quickly growing new sector of industry in the state. It used to be, when I started out, that ecotourism was associated with hippies and kayaks and a little allusion with binoculars and things like that. But in answer to that, I would simply say Bass Pro Shops. That's ecotourism. That's 21st century ecotourism, and it's coming our way. So I think the opportunity here is for us to get in front of that and to anticipate that and try to guide that as a new mission for the city around this multipurpose civic center that's presenting itself to you. I would point out to those concerned about cost that it's wise to be concerned about costs. We don't want to be foolish about this. We don't want to run into something that defeats us. But I think a preliminary look at the cost figure shows that if all we did was move the Crescent City offices to that site, we'd be halfway to covering those costs with very little additional effort. The amount of money that we're putting into these buildings here comes very close to 50% of the carrying costs of that old facility. And that doesn't take into consideration renovation, so that would be additional. And we point out the importance of the concept of partnerships. And we heard JR mention that very wisely. The more partners you can bring in to a multi-agency effort, the more resources you muster and the more money you can connect with. As a grantsman from a university background, the way you get grants is partnerships. The more partners you have in your consortium, the more funding agencies are likely to award those grants, to the point where you can really count on them. So we control this as a one-party effort. We're not asking the city, you expect to do this in a vacuum by itself. But with surrounding institutions, quite a ton of schools, local colleges and universities, the town of Willacca, perhaps even Bass Pro Shops, who knows? There are plenty of parties available that I think could have a stake in this game, and that's the way to look at this. And I think the costs will take care of themselves with the continued effort of the Blue Ribbon Committee and its associate professionals. Thank you very much, and appreciate it.
Hello. I'm Dr. Gann Grossman. My business is the Crescent City Animal Health Center, 125 Lake Road Drive. And first of all, I want to thank everyone. I just found out about this thing just a couple days ago, and I have to say, it's quite impressive. When I first found out about it, I was so excited as it relates to my organization. I'm associated with the Purple Plum Playhouse. And one of the things that makes me really excited is that, just like this project, we're in sort of a, we're in a very early embryonic stage of redeveloping our Purple Plum Playhouse, a community theater that we really set up to try to promote the arts. And the fact that all of a sudden, this gigantic facility that might very well be something that we can potentially use in partnership with you all, in partnership with the community, a facility that, as Hank had already mentioned, we have used. We've put on several shows. It's very exciting to think that at a really early nebulous sort of embryonic stage of this potential project, hopefully it can happen, we're doing the same thing. And Hank talked about it, and he kind of took everything I was gonna say. We didn't really board it very well. So, but I want to just add a little bit as it relates to the Purple Plum Playhouse and how it could be, as you were just saying, a partner, I think a potential serious revenue-producing partnership. And the reason why I say this, this is not just a pipe dream. This is a dream mine that's been this way for years, dream of ours at the Purple Plum Playhouse. I think, and I don't know if you all think this is exciting, but I think it's very exciting. And if you all do think it's exciting, I want to use this moment to also encourage all of you all to think about joining us in the Purple Plum Playhouse, because the Purple Plum Playhouse can be a driver of some of the economic concerns that we're having about this. And Hank alluded to it a little bit, but we're, I'm talking about potentially, can you imagine a theatrical company that's working with the community to do improv nights every month or something? We're talking about regular, not just quarterly shows, but something bigger, like traditional theater shows. There's four sort of, I guess, you know, I guess I would put legs to the table of the Purple Plum Playhouse that I think could be good economic drivers in the area. Because there's not a lot, is there a ton of stuff to do around here, or is it just me? There's not a lot to do. All the way down here, we're 25 miles from the booming cultural center of Willacca. So, you know, I think we have sort of a captive audience down here that could potentially find great excitement in the opportunity to be a part of the audience that is in that theater watching the Purple Plum Players and being a part of the Purple Plum Players, producing things which could be comedy nights, I mean, excuse me, improv nights. We could potentially partnership up with the theater group in the high school and the local schools to do education, do actors workshops, improv practice. You have to get any of you all rehearsed, whose line is it anyway? Doing whose line is it anyway there like once a month or something. Now, who knows? This is just stuff that I think we were talking about and thinking about doing before I ever heard of this project, just for the record. And we were looking for other places to sort of produce our product and put it out there. And this would be the ideal place. We're familiar with the place, and second leg of it would be, we have a completely done, basically, episode that's tailored, a skit episode, a completely original concept skit episode. It's very much tailored after Saturday Night Live. It's called Comedy Night Live. We are going to produce that, and we're gonna put it out there. We're just struggling to find actors and people and really find the moment. And I feel like the moment is coming very soon, and I think you guys are gonna be really impressed with the show that we have together. That would be something that I'm quite sure, with the way my mind is working and our writer team is working, that we can produce regularly a great skit show. Thirdly, I think that it would be really great for us to produce maybe even like a little sitcom. We have some ideas for an actual, regular, live-produced sitcom. Imagine that. That would be so unique. This is not anything that's really being done in community theaters. I'm talking about something new and revolutionary and something that you all can be very excited about. And all of you are welcome to participate. And I would encourage you to consider thinking about joining the Purple Plum, just for the record. And then the last one is traditional theater shows, theatrical shows, all of which, in my opinion, could produce a steady stream of great cultural experience for this community that I think the community would support wholeheartedly. It would be something fun, even kids could go to. We have a large enough theater and a large enough set of seats for it to be a good income producer, to help offset or defray some of the very costs that we're talking about. So anyway, please contact us if you want to join, and thank you all, everyone. Thank you, everyone.
My name is Kitty Melter. I live in Georgetown, 1541 Kelly Road, 309. I represent the South Putnam Christian Service Center that's located now at 301 Cypress Avenue in Crescent City. We were occupants of the school. We were very happy there, and we would love to be able to go back there again. So the center definitely supports this effort. Thank you.
Mr. Noble, I have a, I guess you're already, you're good? Okay, I just want to make sure. At this time, if we have anybody else that would like to come forward, please, if you would, just get in line.
Elizabeth Gomez, 19th Street. And I just wanted to tell everybody that I came here two years ago. And I see a lot of faces. I love you all. And I had a group of people at my house when I was here for four months. And it was the dream of Charlotte Preston. And I know Mayor Tito talked to you about this. I have no idea. I don't know who these people were. But it was concrete, Georgia, and the strong gravy. You already have the Purple Plum that wants to do it. It was a little town, just like ours, dying. And it was a town full of murals. And they started this strong gravy school place, and now they're multimillionaires. Now they hold four or five shows a year, and the town depends on this place. So you already got all of them. They are all volunteers. They do historical plays. They do children's plays. And they're already telling you they're willing to, you know, give it their all. I think you're volunteer for two years of Crescent City. I'm willing to give my all too for whatever it takes. Thank you.
Hello, everyone. I'm Angela Duke, Kepala 004, North Lake Street in this region of the city of Crescent City. I'm so happy I came back home. I grew up here, graduated from Milton Murray High School, where we sell, had a passion, we're gonna have big celebrations this past weekend. My point in coming forward is to talk about what a beautiful city we have here. I don't have to sell you guys on anything, because if you live here, you visit here for once, you know. I came back after traveling around the world. I don't talk too much about that, when UNESCO designed a program for girls and went throughout Africa, South America, et cetera. That was a means of getting out of Crescent City. But I longed to come back home, and I did in 2012. Got very much involved with the community. Everything that you see here, A. Bill Randolph Gallery, A. Bill Randolph Memorial Highway, A. Bill Randolph Kiosk that we just recently installed in the park. And we've been getting a lot of comments about that. I'm gonna segue to something someone said about place being here. Well, a true testament to that is, last year was so hot for Juneteenth, which we do every year. And our city manager then says, "Ain't you wanting to consider calling the school board? Maybe get an interview to school?" Sure enough, no hesitation, they gave us the school. And many people who came, because there was a big funeral or something going on that day, where those who wished to come couldn't come back, we had a great turnout. And they want to know, are we gonna be doing this often? Light went off in the head. Everybody, I guess, was thinking about the same thing. So my point is saying that is, I think it's a great idea for the overall project. I know many great things are gonna happen in that building. I remember being there growing up. I had to go to another school, but it was okay. I'm back. I'm back now. So I just want to say thank you all very much, and thank you for your support, and I'm gonna put the chute down on you guys, I know. And that's part of the Ponesa Historical Society. I'm very proud. Thank you. Thank you.
Good evening, fine ladies and your gentlemen. It's always a pleasure to be with you. And I gotta be brief, because we've heard from a lot of great people with great ideas. I'm fairly new to Crescent City, three years. I've had the fortunate opportunity to live in a variety of communities. And I've seen great changes. We know that in the future, with four-laneing or 17 from the south, continuing to the north, that it's gonna change here in our fine city. And with that, with the increased traffic, the main strip here is going to be heavily used. The school itself has been a community center for years. We've heard about it tonight. I think it's very important that we maintain that community center. Just think of the beauty of the site, next to the water, trees. It's near Central, the great historic buildings. And those historic buildings deserve to be saved. They bring great value to us. It's a place that can continue to serve government, civic, and cultural events here, as well as entertainment. And I think it's vitally important. We heard from John Newell, the presentation, on how the Blue Ribbon Committee has spent a great deal of time looking into this on your behalf, on the city's behalf. And as was recorded tonight, there was a high assessment. And that was studied, and that assessment was greatly reduced. Also, in doing the deep research, you heard from Commissioner Laurie, well, that there are many complications with this property. That for someone else to own it would be, there are many handicaps. It's difficult. The city is the natural choice here. So with the, and of course, with Barbara Scholl's great work, we saw a realistic evaluation as well. So we thank you for hearing us. We thank you for everyone coming out tonight to speak. And we sincerely hope that you allow us to continue to provide this great facility for our community. Thank you.
I've got two more speakers. Mr. Noble, I have two more speakers. Two more. Mr. Watson. I'm sorry.
Let me get out of the way.
I'm sorry.
Hello, Gerald Watson, Port Harbor, Lexington. Just a tidbit, and when I was listening to particularly the theater guys and talking about this other gentleman, talking about how we should take, we can be the nucleus for our own development. I think one thing we need to look at is the triple down, the economic benefit of establishing as a facility. Because, you know, if we have a facility where there's events going on and what have you, that's, what is that gonna do? All our restaurants are going to see more business. All our restaurants are going to see more business. Our gas stations, our stores. And so I think we have to look at the broader economic benefit and potential of what that will generate as part of our assessment. Anything I can do to be supportive in any of that effort, I'm more than glad to do so. Okay?
Anybody else, please step forward.
I'm Lady Lady, 200 Paradise Lane, Crescent City, out of the county, in the county but not in the city. I've lived here 20 years, so I'm not planning to say anything. But years ago, the Historical Society started with about probably about 12 or 15 members. With the help of Cherie Register and her mother's historical facts. And with the help of Danny Miller, who's a commuter of Orlando, whose family has been here forever and was a very big part of Crescent City. He, our historical society has run from that many to even people, relatives and friends of Danny down in Orlando. It has run, and Cherie spent so much time, we worked a lot of us together, taking apart what we were able to go through Mr. Boudley, and go through this building there. Turned several rooms there into an activity room, a being room, a museum that is phenomenal. If it's any of you could not get a chance to go there, and this happened, you should go. The history of this town, I'm not from here. And someone asked us when we first moved here, "Why are you interested in the history of Crescent City?" And I said, "We're interested because anywhere we go, we're interested in the city of the town here." People that we've met, that we've enjoyed Historical Society, have given programs that were phenomenal. Mr. Lee here, I've always booked last month, it's about the Revolutionary War with the women that worked in that. The building, we had a garden there, we had Christmas parties there, we had meetings every month by Commissioner. It's been part of, a big part of it. And it's run so much, and right now, we're meeting at the Women's Club. The Women's Club also has done so much in this community, and they use the facility there. I was once a member, and we had a women in art and music, it was phenomenal. Let's see the auditorium there, the people coming from all walks of the world to see what the women in music and art did. I was so impressed because I'm not very talented in anything, but these women that came in with their art and their music was just amazing. I support this very much so, and I really want to thank our commissioners, and also Danny, and Cherie, and some of the other members that were here, who are part of Historical Society, for continuing with this. Even though we had to stop using the building, we continued. And the fact that on many nights, I think it's the second Tuesday of the month, first Tuesday, I'm forgetting the date, but anyway. The room at the Women's Club is full, and everybody is so excited about it. I just hope that this event will take place, and that most people will be able to help with it in any way they can.
Thank you. Ladies, I mean, any other speakers? Now I ask if you can count four yeses, please, if you could. We need to kind of limit our time at this point.
Good evening, everybody. My name is Daniel Airbong. I'm the owner of Cadier Fitness Gym, 2620 South Avenue, 1735. And I just found out this about the plans, and I'm in favor of it. I've never been here before, so it's my first time speaking this, and I'm in very, very regard of the opportunities that's gonna happen. I speak to the younger crowd that we need some more variety. And just hearing the industry opportunities about what's gonna happen, and they open the doors about more events happening, we need something, I guess. The kids and everybody else growing up, they're bored. So this is something that will definitely open the opportunities, and everybody agrees with it too. So that's my statement, I'm, thank you.
Thank you. Want to close before the commission starts some discussion?
All right. I'm gonna give you a short statement, then I'm gonna ask Charlie Douglas to come back up here. And we're gonna talk about the contract for just a little bit. But I want to make a short statement. The Blue Ribbon Committee is not asking the city to commit to an unaffordable course of action tonight. We're only asking that the proposed contract terms of the city's offer to the Putnam County District, they approve so that we can present that to the school board. With that done, my helper is here, thank you. The contract will be presented to both parties for approval. With the contract approval of the Blue Ribbon Committee being working on a recommendation of rehabilitation and repurposing the operation of the community cultural center, but now imposing financial burden on the city's taxpayers. I will say it again, we are confident you will approve the city's contract offer. Will be, a vote of approval will be the easiest decision of consequences you will ever make. Now, I want to close with a kind of a personal statement, then I know you have questions, so. I love to read, and James Mitchner is one of my favorites. He says, "Knowledge of the past gives men and women the courage to face the future." This property was originally for everyone in that it was a place for the study of the Christian Bible. The Schofield Bible, the first study Bible, much of it written in Crescent City. This property became a place for that study through the Gilbert family and their foundation. Later on, it became a place for some of us. Then it became a place for all of us. Then it was put to rest where it is now. So now, let it become a place for all of us again. Not just Crescent City, but the Putnam Peninsula, the county, the state, and even those from the whole world who come through to see this building being repurposed and how history can be put on display and cherished. Education can be promoted, recreation for all, government housed, and business opportunities in place. An example of how such buildings can be repurposed and become a central part of who we are. All of this in partnership with the school district. Now I want to say one word about partnership. That's not a cliche. What I'm gonna say, I learned some of it from Mr. Boudley, and he's sitting right behind me. A partnership is like a marriage. The city, the district, the school district would do nothing that would hurt the city. The city would do nothing that would harm the district. That's what I mean when we're talking of partnership. It's not just a cliche, it's something, it's two government entities working together, working for each other. They report to the same taxpayers we do. They have their issues, and we have our issues. So that'll be the essence of the negotiations when they start.
Thank you.
Okay, I know you asked that question to me, so why don't we go there?
Commissioner, do you have anything to add?
No, I'm just, at some point, I think it's important that we got a positive answer. I think it's also important that we talk to each other.
I think so, I think so too. Yes, Commissioner Burton, go ahead.
First of all, I just want to say, I'd like to thank the Blue Ribbon Committee for all the work that they've done. But I also think, at the same time, I think it's time to really sunset the Blue Ribbon Committee and replace it. Now, don't get, don't start throwing, I hope you don't have any tomatoes or anything like that. To replace, it's time to sunset it and replace it with a private buyer, which in turn could, once the property is bought, they could rent to a 501(c)(3) and operate it as a community center. And they could do that so much better than the city rarely could do it. And I don't know if this makes sense to y'all, but I was very happy to see all of these people here tonight. I know they're committed to get the center. The city's committed, we've given you the money to, you know, do the appraisal. We've given you $120,000 so that our M can go ahead and finalize what their vision and all of that is. And we will certainly support you for this, the private buyer or 501(c)(3) buyer to move ahead with this idea. But I don't think the city at this time can just go on with the VRC. I think we've spent our time here, now it's time to.
Are you suggesting that we turn this over to a, like a foundation?
You can name a foundation, yeah. That's, I mean, and again, you know, this would be your, everyone's foundation.
Well, that would be the next part of the next step for the Blue Ribbon Committee. We would certainly take that into consideration because if people want to donate,
they can't donate to the city.
They can't donate to the city, they have to donate to a foundation or 501(c)(3). So we would certainly take that into consideration, and it would be a high priority. I'm just, I'm not sure what.
I'm gonna ask everybody, that just, we need to have our discussion. I know there's a lot of, there's a lot of thoughts in here in the room, but if y'all just hold it for right now, go ahead.
I was just gonna say that, you know, the idea is that the school district is interested in transferring the property to.
Microprofit.
Can't hear the mic.
Yeah, the school district is interested in transferring the property to a government, not to a nonprofit. I think that's something that's caused problems in the past, if I'm not mistaken. Mr. Boudley might be able to speak to that. But they more likely would give it to a government like us, a local government, than anyone else. It kind of makes more sense to Tallahassee, I believe, as well as other things. I mean, we, Charlie, I think a 501(c)(3) supporting the development of a community center would be helpful, but I think the city needs to be the people that own this. At least get started with it, and then work with partners to develop it, like we've discussed.
I think you would be very likely to have a trial.
Okay, that's what. I think you'd be a. Let Commissioner Vito, yeah?
So first of all, I want to thank my fellow commission members for bringing us this far. We have established the Blue Ribbon Committee, or I think of it as a task force. We've committed city funds and federal armor funds that have brought us a long way. And I have to say, I have never seen such a turnout with so much positive energy, so many offers of expertise to be donated at no cost, and enthusiasm from some people who I consider to be very knowledgeable about Crescent City, and some of the wisest people in town. To me, development is the city's job. Planning and development, that is the job of the city. That is the effort that we have embarked on with this school property. The Miller Middle School site is a classic redevelopment project. And just to remind ourselves as a commission, redevelopment involves revitalization of an underused area for purposes of community and economic development that may include repurposing existing buildings, renovating or adding to existing buildings, and adaptive reuse of historic structures, in addition to possibly creating new structures for new use of the land. We are talking about 12.77 acres in the very heart of the city. Part of it is in the CRA. As people here have mentioned, it abuts our central business district. And anything that we do there has the potential to either disadvantage or to help revitalize that business district. I think we've come to a great point, and we have a great opportunity to fulfill our responsibility as a city in redevelopment. This is something that is very common for local governments to do, either as the CRA or as the city. And that is to take possession of properties so that the city can make sure that it guides and does the proper plan. I've mentioned, I don't know if Commissioner Warren was on the commission then, but I've dated a point almost every year that I've been on the commission to go to the redevelopment conference and take then the weekly long courses. And this is now what cities do. And what the Blue Ribbon Committee has proposed is generally the classic way that cities do it. They take possession of the land, and they guide it. It doesn't mean they keep it. It doesn't mean they pay for it in the long term. So it seems to me it's not yet ripe for turning this over to a private foundation. I don't know of a private foundation. I don't know that we're yet in posture to do that. I think that is a potential step down the road. And as well, we aren't just talking about a community center, we're talking about a complex of uses that would have to be occupied by several different groups, and potentially could even involve commercial uses, which I'm not sure that a private foundation is, I don't, I can't think of anyone that would step forward to do that without charging us money at this point. What we have is free help and offers of more free help. And according to the reports that we've had, we have the potential cooperation of the Putnam County School District. They are about to have a workshop on this issue, I believe, on March 4th. So I would just remind y'all that what we had at that site, we've had plays at the auditorium, we have a gymnasium, we had archives and histories center there that was a tremendous draw for people. People who came to town for the first time would go there and say, "Wow, this is really amazing. I want to know more about this, I want to know more about that, I want to stay here and eat at restaurants." So I think we're on the right path. And I just wanted to share with y'all, what we're doing has a lot of impressive. I don't know if you saw the email that I shared with pictures of the Delaware Beach. um, what is it called, it's called, uh.
It's called Delaware Old Square Schools.
Right.
Old School Square, yeah.
So, that, um, my husband and I were in Delaware Beach couple of weeks ago, and we had to walk through this property to get to the tennis court we were going to, and I, I just couldn't believe it, it's six acres in the middle of town. Um, it includes Cornell Art Museum, we have the potential town history museum right in the middle of our historic district, and amphitheater, and has, um, a theater and an outdoor theater. One of the pictures that I sent, um, and I believe Mr. Gonzalez used this as a, as an example, one of the pictures is of an outdoor amphitheater, it has a park, uh, and a vintage gym. And, um, it's been beautifully restored, it's right in the middle of town, it's obviously well-used, there are performances there, it's obviously been a part of the revitalization. And I just wanted to mention, I sent you the link that says about, um, the.
Dot net?
Right.
Did you look at the history of it?
Yes, I did.
How it was acquired?
Yes.
Where it is now?
Yes.
How much it is to manage it?
Fine.
How much it was to manage it, manage it, and how many dollars of C R A money they had to do to subsidize it.
Okay, so, um, but essentially, then, that story each, we're Crescent City. Um, but essentially, they set up a task force, they have volunteer help, um, they provided direction to the city council and basically a roadmap and a feasibility study. And they have found the funding. It is still owned, I believe, by the city of Delaware Beach, and I think that's the pattern. And I must say, um, I was very happy to hear from our, the architect with R E G, Mr. Gonzalez, that our building's had good balls. I think that is very encouraging, um, because when we started out, we really didn't know. So I think that's a good thing, um, but I think that we are following a, um, a conventional path that has been effective before, um. We have a lot of enthusiasm, I would call this, um, a catalyst, and I would hope that we would move forward. We are not committed to spend any money at this stage. And I, I think that is key to understand. We don't have to make any commitments, um, until we go through a hundred and eighty day due diligence period, and I would assume that we're gonna use that for further studying and to figure out the funding. Um, but what we're, what we're doing is the way that successful projects have taken place.
Um, I, I just wanna ask, I'm gonna ask a question.
Please.
We're dealing with a situation, and I've, I've made some notes here because I've been struggling with this over and over and over again, and I feel like right now, we're dealing with a situation, um, a financial decision that's being pushed onto the commission right now, rather than put it to a public vote, and we've said this all along, um, that I felt like that with something like this, we have a, a financial responsibility to make sure that we're stable, that the city's stable. Um, and with that, I'm just gonna ask, how many of you actually, if you would stand up, pay taxes here in Crescent City?
Pay taxes?
Pay Crescent City taxes.
Do you pay Crescent City taxes?
Not, not, not counting taxes, not that you live in the county, but that you, I'm just, I'm just asking, just indulge me for a moment.
I'm, I'm one of those persons.
Okay.
Rea, please re-ask the question.
Stand up, please. How many, just please stand up. Pay taxes. Please stand up if you actually pay Crescent City taxes, and not counting taxes, but that you either live in the city or you have property in the city. Okay. Thank you. I just, I just wanted to, I just wanted us to kind of get an idea because we have about seventeen hundred residents in, in Crescent City.
We're also vote.
And we have nine hundred voters, we have over nine hundred voters. And, and so this represents a good portion, but it's not everyone. And this is an undertaking that, that, that we're going to, um, have to, to figure out. And from our side, and, and Commissioner Harris and Commissioner West. Mayor, Mayor Commissioner.
May I speak to that?
Can I just, can I finish?
Yeah.
Can I just finish? So, so we've, we've got, when you're sitting on this side, um, and I didn't know it because I've sat on your side, and I've been in support of a lot of things, but when you come over here and you actually have to make it work, um, it's, it's, it's not quite as easy, and we bear the burden on our shoulders. And if we put the burden of this on our residents, then ultimately, we're responsible for that. And, and that's what, um, that's why I have some concerns that we're not willing to take it to the voters, and let the voters, and let them speak to us, and tell us, we want you to acquire this, it matters to this community, and we're willing to, if all else fails, and there's no grant money, let's be realistic, you're all watching the news right now. If there's no dollars out there, that we're willing to pony up and help pay for that. And I understand what you're saying, with the arts, they're so important, we want the arts, we absolutely want the arts. Amen, every festival we can have here because it brings joy to our community. Okay, we want the historical society, we want them to have a home, we want a Christian service center, we want them to have a home because they serve needs in this community. But all of that comes with a big price, and what a lot of us, a lot of don't realize, is oftentimes, we're hanging on by a thread here at the city. We can't even curb it right now. And, and so I'm, I'm concerned that we're taking up this on, and how we got to the point from an advisory committee, which I thank you all so much for the time and effort you put into it, from an advisory committee to having a contract in front of us with an attorney that we never even approved of, I'm not sure how all of that happened without the commission's approval, because at the end of the day, again, we're the ones that are gonna have to answer to the people.
Okay, and so.
Yes.
Okay. Um, I think you have a good point about having more input from a broader segment of the town. Um, I'm not opposed to a vote about this, but what I would like us to consider is it would be premature to have any kind of a vote. The Blue Ribbon Committee, or I prefer to think of them as a task force, um, is not done with its work, I don't really see the point of having a vote when you don't, haven't completed the next steps of where potential funding would come from.
And I didn't finish with that, because I think that when you go to, when you go to the voters, you're gonna have to tell them, we're gonna have to have that plan, it's gonna have to be a plan in place, just like the school board did with the bond referendum, and Mr. Newbold, you helped with that, correct?
Say it again.
With the bond, with the school bond, you helped with that, correct? And they had a plan, so they had it laid out, and people knew how much that was gonna cost.
Right, so Mayor, what I'm saying is, R E G architects has not finished their report, and by the way, I believe when Mr. Gonzalez was introduced as on the Historical Commission, I believe that is the state Historical Commission that iss- issues grant funds, is that not correct? And he has told us that there are still grant funds. So I guess what I'm saying is, we've gotten to a great point, we have community enthusiasm, we have, um, task force members who are willing to continue the study, and we're not being asked to commit money. We're being asked to do due diligence and figure out how we can do this. And to me, I think that's a reasonable point to be at, nobody has asked us to commit money, and we're not being asked to write a check at this point, other than if we were in a contract, um, with the school district. That is our diligence period, it requires nothing, um, but a hundred dollars, and I don't, somehow I see that saying, oh no, we have to go to the voters, when all of these people here have said they want to help, we, we need to let this effort.
Mr. should do that.
Yes.
I've sat here with you for four years.
Yes.
Okay. We don't have finances in front of us, we don't have a plan in front of us, we're looking at, they're, they're asking us right now, and I'm sorry, uh, please know, people, if anybody, I hope you know that I want what's best for this city. But we don't have any of that in front of us, and then you're saying it's okay to go to a contract? Well, we don't even know how to pay for it, wait a second, wait a second.
Can I say something at this point?
Yes, sir.
All right, the contract that we're gonna present, even though it's incomplete, states that the city does not take possession until the finances are in place. The city has no financial risk whatsoever.
I think you're not looking at.
No, and how long will that take?
Okay.
We don't know, but it'll, it'll take some time, it'll take six months, might take a year, might take longer. And, and in the partnership arrangement, the, the district, school district, would like to transfer the property, but the city can't afford to take it until the finances are in place. So that's the partnership we're talking about, and we're asking the district to, to agree to that. So the city has no financial risk whatsoever.
Okay, so I, rather than a contract, I think that we should, I think we're putting the cart before the horse, I think that a memorandum of understanding with the school district, um, we've never done that, they don't know that we're interested formally in the property, I guess, you've met, you've met with them?
Yeah.
And you have. Have you gone to the council?
No, we're going for the, the district and a workshop.
And so, um, if we could do, you know, Don?
Ma'am.
Yes.
And I'll tell you, the Blue Ribbon Committee is just, is ready for finish this work.
And I, and I understand that, and, and please know, I mean.
And we know, we, we know we can get it done.
Okay, and I'm sure you can, I, I am absolutely positive you can, but I don't think that we, um, we have got to be, we have to be vigilant in making sure that we, we, the devil's in the details, and that we have worked out everything we can, and, and to enter into a contract, a, a sale contract, knowing that we don't have that figured out yet, um, it, it's.
If down the road, we don't perform, and I think happens to the satisfaction of the city, the city goes on after.
Okay.
At that point, if the city has no risk at this point, the only risk you have is what we will negotiate with the district.
Okay, Mr. Newbold, I'm gonna, I'm gonna ask Don for some, Don's in an awkward spot because we don't even have, we, we, thank you, Mr. Douglas, for your willingness, but we haven't entered into an agreement with you, um, I think, where is it?
It's pro bono.
It doesn't matter, it's pro bono, we have the, we, the commission, let me finish. We, the commission, have not entered into a formal agreement with him to represent our interest, okay? You, my, of the Blue Ribbon Committee, um, I'm not sure how that happened without it coming for us, Commissioner Vito, you would have taken heads off. Because of that situation, no, you wouldn't.
Did you, I'm sorry, why are you saying what I've done?
Because you were, because I just know, and that's, I'm trying to, I'm trying to.
Excuse me?
That we could be.
Scott.
That we could be.
Are you saying you don't want him representing?
I'm not saying that, I'm not saying that, I'm saying that we, the commission, has not entered into an agreement with him to represent us.
We, we were not part of the thought to, to enter into an agreement.
And so.
Kind of blindsiding.
And so Don, Don is our, he's our attorney, he's the school district's attorney, he can't represent, but we know that.
I can't, I can't represent either.
Well, that's true, you can't represent. So.
That wasn't, that wasn't intended to be a funny remark.
So.
By the student. Remarkable, intended to be very serious, in that because of conflict of interest, or, excuse me, ethical conflict considerations, in this transaction, Mr. Bowling and I have already discussed it, school districts already discussed it, if this goes forward, I'll sit on the sidelines from both sides because it wouldn't be fair to either client for me to be involved in, you know, in this. Uh, so that's, we, we, I think you're, I was contacted by the clerk, I think, before we, before we came tonight, and I said, look, if you'd, if you'd like, I won't even come tonight because, uh, I'm not gonna make any statement about pros or cons of the deal going forward, or the concept, that wouldn't be appropriate. Um, but further, I won't, I won't be involved on either side in terms of the contractual side of this thing because it wouldn't be appropriate either. Uh, school district will have to get someone to represent them in this transaction, and I think you would too. And I'm not saying who would or wouldn't, or who's, who's, you know, I just, that's not my place to say, but you understand.
I, I absolutely understand, I absolutely, and that's what I'm saying is, we currently, right now, haven't even contracted with an attorney to represent us, so to go into even, I would never send, I would never send a city manager, anybody in there to negotiate a sale without legal representation. I know Mr. Douglas is here, and he has offered to do a pro bono, but I think the commission, um, that's something that the commission would have to, have to approve.
And the other thing is, it's, he wants us to authorize an interim city manager. Now, an interim city manager, we, we respect Michael Rohan, but he's an interim city manager, and for him to make any decisions to, to, um, for, you know, once we get a new manager, and kind of stick that manager.
Let me, let me add a second.
Is, is a problem.
I, I thought long and hard about the three people to negotiate for the city. Over the years, and here's the reason I came to this conclusion, the three people. Over the years, I've been involved in contracts, and I look back, maybe eight, some were with the school board, some were with the central part of central orbit, but most was in my business. And of those eight, uh, contract discussions, two of them went much more smoothly because they had a bridge. I'm gonna explain what I mean by a, a bridge. Let's say the three of us negotiate with the school board, and we come up with a decision we think that the city commission would accept. At that point, it would go to the mayor. And the mayor would make, would have a choice, of two choices. She would say, well, I think I did this the right, I'll take it before the commission. But she can also say, I don't think this will work, you need to go back and negotiate some more. When we, both sides, know that's going to be the process, somehow the negotiators work faster. They work diligently, it seems that way, that's been my experience. And in the end, they come up with a definitive contract. Don't you think that makes a lot of sense?
So, so this is not in favor or against the concept or the terms or anything of that nature? Um, as I indicated before, representing both parties, I have to be very careful that what I say, that my benefit one doesn't hurt the other, that's why I'm out. However, I still represent the city when it comes to matters of sunshine law and delegation of authorities. So what I am gonna say is this, it was acknowledged by Mr. Newbold, who knows, by the way, that he is my great personal admiration, and I hold him in high. and I hold him in high esteem, he knows that. Uh, I'll say it out loud publicly, but I've said it before privately. Um, but the committee that has been formed is is a sunshine committee, in my opinion. I voiced that to the mayor and others. Uh, Florida sunshine or Florida public records law, which is the commonly called the sunshine law, says that if anybody, anybody, body meaning group, appointed or designated by this body has any function at all other than a pure fact finding. And when you read the A C opinions, they consider fact finding nothing more than gathering information and regurgitating it. No uh, no uh selection, no filtering, no ranking or prioritization, none of that. At that, because if they do, then that, at that point, it's a, it's a sunshine committee. Their meetings have to be published, the public has to have notice of the meeting. And no two members of that committee can communicate except in a public meeting. Now, if two members of that committee are on this negotiating team, you're gonna have to do those negotiations in a public, publicly noticed meeting. Because that's going to be communication between two members of the committee and that's going to be a sunshine issue. Which I would advise my client, the school board as well. So you can delegate someone to go negotiate, I agree. But it can't be two members of this committee that's that's already acknowledged to be a sunshine committee. Next, the process that that Mr. Newville mentioned, it implies that you would be delegated authority by the rest of the commission to make a kind of a threshold decision of whether an offer goes to the full commission. And they have the ability to do that, but they're gonna, they would have to do that. They would have to vote to put you in a position of of casting the initial, um, I guess, approval or disapproval of whatever the committee comes back with. Otherwise, it's gotta come back to the full, the full commission. So with those two caveats as to procedures, I would simply say, you can, in fact, if should you want to, uh, authorize someone to go negotiate. And Mr. Brillhart could be one, and Mr. Newville could be one, they're not members of the same committee. He's Mr. Brillhart's chair of city manager, and Mr. Newville's a member of your committee. But you can't have, and Mr. Douglas, if he's gonna be the attorney for that committee, he would not be, and he's not a member of the committee. I don't know if he is or he isn't, but if he's not a member of that committee, but he's acting as their attorney, he would, he would be someone who could be involved in that, but he's not a member of the committee, working as their legal counsel. Um, but you can't have two members of the committee doing it. It can't be Mr. uh, Laurie and Mr. Newville and and Mr. Brillhart and Mr. Douglas. At that point, that's gonna be a sunshine violation and I would advise the school district not participating in that. Okay?
Thank you. And ma'am, yes, I, um, a couple things. Um, I do think that your point is very well taken, that um, well, first of all, I want to say, um, I cannot fault the Blue Ribbon Committee um, for their enthusiasm. I mean, they're volunteers and they're very enthusiastic. Um, I do think that maybe the formalities and technicalities were overlooked. I I do think it was well taken that we have not entered into a relationship or authorized, um, this wonderful attorney, Mr. Douglas, who is willing to help us. I think that is a very important step. Um, and I understand, um, somewhat, Commissioner Brink raising a concern about an interim um city manager negotiating for us, although um, he's been doing a great job on everything else so far.
Yes.
But um, I do think that that is very important stuff, that anyone who negotiates for us, particularly an attorney, come be proposed to us and that we accept that. I think that is very important. Um, but I'm a little bit, um, I don't know, I just, um, I would like to see us move forward because we have offers of help and we are not committing ourselves to spend a dime. We, I think we aren't there yet. We don't know what costs, R R E G hasn't even finished.
They haven't finished.
Right, and we we have so much potential. Um, I think we at least need to go forward and see. Um, I've heard about quite a few offers of help, some of them quite valuable. Um, I think we owe it to ourselves to see whether those will come through. And without spending money or talent.
Um, and and Commissioner Vito, I I I apologize to you, but you have school does and in details. And so, that's why I'm using you as an example, and so, I didn't mean that as an offensive, um, manner, I just want you to know.
And I just hope I don't um take her out.
Yeah, that was a very important thing.
I agree, I agree.
Okay, good, so what I, I guess I'm going to, now, I'm gonna ask you to do. I'm gonna ask you to vote on the concept of the contract. You're not voting on the contract because it's not complete. But just the concept and I asked Charlie to come up and talk about that. But I'm also gonna ask you to vote on the three people to negotiate, but also as Mr. Douglas, as I, as the city attorney. Make that a a formal thing, uh, that's your discretion, so. I don't know if we wanna put that all in one motion or how you handle it, but I'm, I'm gonna ask Charlie if he will come up. And then I'm gonna put, I'm gonna put in where lawyers don't want to go.
I don't think you have to ask him.
I'm gonna give you.
I think you have to ask.
For the overview of the contract, just so that that we all can understand it and.
Thank you, thank you. Well, it's a standard, I mean, it's a standard commercial contract, is that correct? With some, with some requirements, addendums at the end that we need to, we'll have to adhere to, both parties will have to adhere to. But let me ask you a question if I can. Um, what, wouldn't we, shouldn't we start with some sort of a memorandum of understanding between us and the school district to start these discussions before we actually enter into an official contract? That we know, um, quite possibly, 180 days, 160 days, we're not gonna have, um, the time for that. I I'm, I'm always hesitant to enter into a contract when it's kind of like going to buy a car. I don't know, Commissioner, I'm breaking this down in simple terms, but it's like going to buy a car, not having financing, and not even know how much I can even afford to pay for that car. Um, but I'm gonna go ahead and I'm gonna sign up for this car and boy, I hope it all works out for me.
Wait, wait, ma'am, wait, I got a better contract.
Go ahead.
No, that would be, you were, I think, close, but I think it is more like.
I know, but I know I would, I knew I wouldn't do it there, but go ahead.
But no, I wouldn't have thought of this if you hadn't run it up. I think it is more like a contract to buy a house contingent on either selling your home or obtaining the financing. That's an out for buyer, if you don't get the financing.
I know, I guess I've just never entered into an agreement to buy a house if I didn't know that I had the wherewithal to pay for that house. That's what I'm saying.
Right, but.
And I've, and I've got a real estate license, so I mean, I get it too. And so I just would never enter into buying a house without being, knowing that I was able to pay for the house. And that's all I'm saying, is is there anything we can do to slow this down to where we're not entering into a contract, but we could enter into some sort of a, an understanding with the school district? They don't have it on the market right now. I don't know what, we're still waiting on R E G to get us, to get us the, um, the study, and and we're, how far out are we from that?
March is the draft and then late April, May is the final.
Okay. Yeah, and so we're starting into our budget. We also, for those of you and Commissioner Vito, I know you're probably very aware of this, you and Commissioner Laurie both, is that, um, you know, we've got the legislature right now. Legislature has a bill out there where they're looking at homestead exemptions are, they're paying it. All exemptions, a hundred thousand dollars, right off the top. Commercial, investment, all property, they're looking, they have a bill for a hundred thousand dollars exemption, right off the top. Now, that has to go to the voters. But chances are, it's gonna go through the legislature because it's no skin off their back and they'll send it to the voters with sixty percent vote, and if that happens, that will take effect January first of twenty twenty seven. Well, do you know what that's going to do to us if that happens?
And they are, this is what I want to say.
Yes.
For that reason, it is vital that this not turn into the destroyed property that was depicted on the screen, that it become productive. We may need even more to make sure that our downtown is revitalized and producing commercial income. And this is a key to it. And so what I am saying is, no, we don't know if we have the money. But we have some very good people who have volunteered to help us try to find that money. And again, I think we owe it to ourselves to accept free help to find money.
Well, the other thing, the other thing is happening though is that the bond, okay, that we're that we're gonna have to start paying, and I forget how that imprimes up, but it, but it ends up being quite a fat bill.
What month?
On property.
So what, yes, yes.
And, you know, and that's really gonna affect everyone here, um, in Putnam County. And, um, you know, and then on top of that, I mean, i- it's just a snowball. And I, and I just think that, you know, it's a snowball coming downhill and we we do have to kind of slow our roll, you know, we just have to make sure that we're taking the right steps.
So, Mr. Douglas with that, can you, I would like to hear from you, but if you were, um, what would be your recommendation?
Just as a preliminary comment, I was contacted by the Blue Ribbon Committee in order to try to help put some words on paper. As Mr. Newville said, this is an incomplete document, the the whole purpose was to try to get feedback from the commission on the the departure orders would be, so to speak, uh, going into the workshop with the school district. With that said, you know, the last twenty minutes, um, I wanna be sure that the the commission and I are on the same page, if it is the will of the commission to have me here for for the Blue Ribbon Committee and on behalf of the city commission going into the school district, not moving from Mr. Home to the car, to help at least advise the commission on how to pass the bond to me to help go to the district. I just wanna make sure that I'm with the the proper authority to represent the city commission to go to the district.
He's gonna tell you, run, go ahead.
God, well, um, I would say that, uh, it would be a matter of, a- as you know, the commission has the ability to hire consultants on an ad hoc basis in a variety of different fields, including attorneys. Um, you you do, as a matter of fact, through your insurance company, actually, but, you know, we, you have liability assistance or assistance of liability cases through the league with different attorneys. I I think it's the same concept, I think there's no problem with you entering into a, what amounts to an agreement. Call it a contract, if you will, we want to thank, uh, Mr. Doug, Mr. Douglas and forgive me if I say Charlie, we've known each other for a while. Um, probably known his dad longer than Charlie, but, uh, in any event, um, I think it'd be, there's nothing at all wrong with you entering into a a a agreement with him to provide representation with regard to this particular issue, if, you know, should you choose to do that. And that would authorize him to advise you. I'm sure he would anyway, but that would, that would make him ethically obligated to, you know, fulfill his duties as an attorney to you in recognizing your interests in regard to the contract. And the only question that he would have to ask is, does he think he's got a conflict between representing the interests of the Blue Ribbon Committee, which he's been advising for some time, and representing your interests, because they may not be exactly aligned? Now, that's just, uh, a question. Maybe that's a question that I, that I'm not in a position to answer. I'm not, I'm not a judge, so I wouldn't be answering that question if he feels like.
I I agree with that and, you know, if you want the Blue Ribbon Committee to continue forward as the the entity that meets with the school district, or if the the commission has a different route to go where the the commission would prefer someone on the commission itself. That the Blue Ribbon Committee not move forward, that the the commission would design a program to interact with the school district. I would, I would feel like I need to know how you want the Blue Ribbon Committee to operate, if at all, from this point forward, so I can know who is, who is my client.
Commissioner, did you have something?
Was I relaxed? Do you know how I feel? No, um, can I say, I would.
Yes, absolutely, you've been.
Yeah, I just wanna say that, um, I'm happy to see all of our city, um, members here. And I know I'm sitting here as a new member here on the commission and I'm learning as we are, um, going through the process and everything. I I just want you all to know I'm behind the project because I am born and raised Crescent City too. So I've seen what was was happening and everything. But I want you all to know that I think it is a good project because I am a retired educator and I've always thought that our children need something to do. So, um, when we get our, how do you say, your your ducks in a row and every, everything you wanna do, I just need to hear just a little bit more of how are we gonna, you know, we can finance this and 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 not be in the hole, you understand what I'm saying? But I'm all for the project, because I think we need something more in the city, I do agree.
I I think we put it in our, I mean, we put it in our master plan. The commission, um, in a perfect world, we saw this, there's a vision for it, we see it. It's just we have to go about it. I feel the most responsible in the right way. And and so that's, I I I get the feeling from all of the commissioners that, you know, that, yes, we feel like we can, we can see that happening, something happening over there, but we have to make sure that it's done correctly.
I told you all will blame us for messing it up.
Exactly, as if it messes up, and somebody said that to me yesterday, they said they want you, if something happens, yes, who's gonna be to blame for it, when you're not, when you're not delivering.
Oh, no, ma'am, Charlie. How would you think of that? How would you suggest of that, how do we do that?
Well, that's why I'm asking for some advice here, because how do we, how do we get forward from here legally? Uh, and 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 we, we're at, we're at Quahog here because we're trying to figure this all out because we can't, Don can advise us.
Why do you keep pointing your finger at me?
Okay, ma'am, could I break this down into component parts?
Go ahead, okay.
How do we move forward? Commissioner Warren said she wants to know about how we would pay for it. That we have a task force that we call the Blue Ribbon Committee, ready, willing, and able to figure out how to pay for it. And I think the most common thing for us to do is to let them go ahead and do that work. They have done a great job at bringing in, um, expertise that is not on the Blue Ribbon Committee. And I think it sounds like they can continue to do that. I don't, if we want to have a place for the purple pond players, for kids to have activities and entertainment, Mr. Aragon, who's probably one of the youngest people in the room, and runs two very successful businesses, um, he said we need more for young people. If we want to have a history museum and archives, somebody's gotta figure out how to pay for all that. And these folks are volunteering to do it, so.
The city, the city does not take possession
Yeah.
until the money is in place.
Uh-huh, right, exactly, but I'm saying that we need, what I'm saying is, um, I think we need the continued work of our appointed task force to help us figure out the funding.
Can I make this again? So first of all, that term you just stated is not in the contract, Mr. Newville. Um, that the city wouldn't take possession until the money's in place. As a matter of fact, and I'm just sitting here looking at a contract, but Charlie has already indicated right up front that the contract wasn't complete, so I know there are additional terms to be inserted. That's contemplated, right? So I'm not, it's not fair for me to judge the contract in its present form because. because the preface of your mark was it's, it's not complete, right?
Correct.
Okay. So from my perspective, I'm just gonna say, you've all indicated a desire to see the project go forward if you thought that it can be paid for.
We need funds.
Right. So, uh, the, the way the contract reads right now, it, and just to point out a couple of things that would probably make me feel better if I were gonna be advising you about your position and you're not, you know, you, you've been, it being clear that you had the ability to, to back out. There, there is no, you, you could easily add a term that specifically states, and I'm sure Charlie could easily word it, that states that, you know, the negotiations would be contingent upon your having financing in place by the time you consider it. Right now, there's a generic clause that basically says, "The time for acceptance and the effective end of contract shall be the day when the unpaying school district board members of the City Commission of the City of Palacka, City of Preston City, approve the terms and the sale in the formal recorded and published meeting." So, you know, it may be hitting it, maybe getting there, but it might make you feel more comfortable if it specifically stated that, you know, the contract is contingent upon something you mentioned, enlivening it to a home deal, contingent upon, uh, you having terms in place for financing and, and meeting the, the financial obligations, uh, prior to approval. And then that gives you that out you talked about. The committee, Charlie and the member, could go ahead and negotiate the best deal they think they can, bring it back to you, you either approve it or you don't. Um, and, and at least you get your square one. I mean, do you understand what I'm saying?
Yes.
Is there something you find objectionable about that?
No, I, I just wanna, um, reaffirm that the, 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 the sequence, the, the timing of all this. Is it the will of the commission for the BRC to continue? Is it the will of the commission for the BRC to conclude and that the commission itself move forward? If it's the latter, then I, I would want there to be some type of, um, an agreement for that, that you all want me in, in that role to, to help you move forward. And if you do, I'm, I'm happy to help. If you don't, then there could be a review of other professionals who would, could help in that regard as well. I'm not here to try to insert myself, or I'm, uh, not welcome by any means, but please know my willingness to help in, in, in any way that we can. And i- if, if your decision is the former, which is to have the BRC continue forward and let them be the, the group that negotiates on your behalf, then, you know, we can continue a- as we're here tonight. But I just hesitate to give official legal advice to the City Commission.
I, I, I understand.
Mayor, I think we need two separate things here, and it, we may need two separate things. Number one, um, we said a long time ago that the Blue Ribbon Committee was not necessarily gonna negotiate with us. They're supposed to be fact finding. Now, sometimes there's fine line between fact finding and some kind of preliminary negotiation, but we see that as fact finding, and I think that they've been extremely valuable to us. They've been valuable to the school district. If the Blue Ribbon Committee had not done this work, and it has been hours and hours of professional work, no one would know this information about title issue, and we would be looking at this property being vacant and in a legal mess for a war those how many years. So they've, they've done some very important work, and it's benefiting both the school district and us. So to me, their next job is for us, because are we gonna do this?
Uh, well.
I mean, I'm saying.
We, we remember.
Yes.
We're the ones that have to answer to.
Yeah, I know, but, okay, but for, for fact, no, 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 we said they were not negotiating. But for fact finding, we have not addressed the funding issue yet. They've already just scratched the surface, and I think that it's in all of our best interest to let them go out there and look into the potential sources of funding. I think that is the best thing that they could do for us right now. And by potential sources of funding, I also mean partners who can bring funding to the table. Now, the issue of legal representation, we only need if we want to enter into our agreement. And I do think, um, thank you, Don, for pointing out that things we would like to have in there are not there. Um, I do see that there are some protective provisions for the school property, um, in that agreement. Uh, it seems to me like an agreement is of some kind is needed. Um, but I think we need to know more about the funding. Um, and then, I, I would agree with you, and I think that anyone who represents us should answer to us, yes.
And, and I'm gonna put on one more thing just to try to save time, so this isn't a nonstarter. I've not looked at the title. I have no ability to offer any opinion on the status of title, and don't intend to.
Yeah.
Mr. Newbold with some link to say, and Mr. Flory, that the title was basically not marketable. Could it easily be made marketable? The contract calls for the school district to convey marketable title and to buy a title insurance policy assuring marketable title. I don't know who's gonna represent the school board in this, but if you tell me that the title can't be made marketable, but then tell me I gotta give you marketable title, I'm probably gonna have some pause.
I, I know.
See, that's why, uh, in all of this, and, and with murder, you know, I mean, somebody's gonna have to help with the school district to determine there's a thirty year, there's a thirty year window there, um, what actually in their title, in those titles, um, is gonna fall off and what still holds. So somebody's gonna have to help them with that. I just feel like we are, we're putting the cart before the horse, and we still have work left to do, to be done. And we need to enter into, that's what I'm recommending, that if we have to enter into an agreement with the school district that, um, let us all get our ducks in the row and, and go forward from there. I think that that is, that protects everyone, I think that protects everyone. And if it comes back that, that we can't find funding and we have to, um, figure that out, and it has to go to the people, then we, the commission, will have to make that determination that we take it to the people because they're gonna be the ones that are gonna have to shoulder the burden of, of this. And, um, so that's just, that's my recommendation. Yes, Don?
But the point remains, I'm not gonna be able to advise.
You can't, I know, so we've got to be there higher.
They're, they're going to need, if, if you're, if, if, uh, Mr. Douglas is going to be able to provide services in that regard, he's, he's asked for, uh, you know, delegation of that authority, and that would seem to be fair, that if he's gonna be, if he's going to be providing advice to the committee and to you, then.
My ex, yeah, so we would be.
We, we really need unanimity to go before the school board on the concept of accepting the property. That's what we need, plus the people to negotiate and the attorney.
Commissioner Vito, did you have something to say?
Well, just that when we speak, we need to speak into our mics, but, um, I think from the sense of the commission, it seems to me is that we need to propel to the metal to continue pursuing where funding would come from. Is that what I'm understanding from Commissioner Ward, for example?
Yes.
And so my recommendation would be, I don't know when the BRC concludes, but I would like to see them continue that work because we don't have a great ladder on staff, and we, we need their help. We need the BRC's help to come up with potential funding and partners. Um, and then we also, uh, we also need help if we want to enter into a preliminary memorandum of understanding with the school district. Obviously, we need some legal assistance.
And so at that point, we would have to ask, they would have to have a motion with, for Mr. Douglas, and he would have to represent him as the Green Ribbon Committee.
Um, but, no, I wish I mean that, Mr. Douglas, you could not talk to the Blue Ribbon Committee, or, um, you can, can you provide expertise on what Commissioner Vito?
Yes, sir, as long as the, the interests aren't wide between the City Commission and the Blue Ribbon Committee, there would not be a conflict there. But if, I mean, I can't imagine a scenario where the two would conflict since the Blue Ribbon Committee is sort of.
We, we.
The Red Ribbon Committee is the city.
Yes, I, I know that.
Well, the Blue Ribbon Committee is the city, but there's citizens that are, that we've appointed.
I mean, everything we do is for you, the city.
And we understand, and we understand that, and we have, we have been so grateful. And, and we know that the admiration and respect that, that I have and that we all have for you and for all the members there. But please, again, at, when, 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 what is it, rubber hits the road or whatever, it's gonna be, it's gonna be our phones that are gonna be ringing, it's gonna be people knocking on our doors. And we've got to be able to make sure that we've done, um, what the people asked us to do. And, and, and so that's where we are. So commissioners, um.
I would like to make a motion. And, uh, this, you know, we do answer to the people. Um, people spoke pretty strongly tonight, so I would like to move that we, when does the BRC conclude?
March 3rd.
March 3rd, okay, so they're not going to. Right, um, I would like to move that we extend, um, the life of the Blue Ribbon Committee, um, for, let's see, March, April, May, June, um, to the end of June, and so that they can, uh, specifically, in addition to the other responsibilities as established, they can specifically concentrate on funding and partners that would make this effort viable.
Second.
Commissioner, the motion is second, Commissioner, do you have anything special?
So, we're going to June, you said? Oh, I would, this is not easy to do. This is time consuming work.
She asked if it was June.
Yeah, it's, uh, to June, April, May, well, no, that would be the end of July because they're extending three months beyond March 30th. That would give till the end of July. And, right, and they have to meet the sunshine, they have to make phone calls, they have to have meetings. And it's not something you do overnight.
Um, the only, the only concern I have, and this has come out today, and I think it's, um, is we're the commission.
Yes.
And we're asking them to continue to do fact finding, but we're not asking them to go out on our behalf and to represent, um, their thoughts as our thoughts. And, and you understand what I'm saying? Well, I mean, you, I mean, you have to be, because you all would have entered into, no, I'm good, I'm good to you. I'm just saying that, you know, they've already gone and they've met with the district, um, and talked to the district, they've already.
Those fact finding.
Got a con, uh, did you not, when you went and talked to the district, you didn't talk about negotiations and what they had planned?
They talked about, we've talked about information, exchange of possibilities, but that's not negotiating.
Mr. Bowling?
I am.
I'd like Mr. Bowling to speak, just a second, yes, sir?
Sure. I'm here to answer any questions that you have.
I just heard you, I just saw you nod.
Well, I know, I mean, I, I've, I've heard a lot about communication with the district. Um, and Superintendent and myself did meet with Commissioner Lord, uh, Mr. Newbold. Um, and before I say anything else, and, and respect has been given where it's due all night, so I wanna make sure I do the same. Um, I have a great deal of respect for both gentlemen, um, as, as much as everybody on this commission and everybody else in this room. Um, I fully understand the magnitude of speaking to you tonight about your community. I'm gonna say that again. It's your community, it's your school, this is your town, these are your taxes. Um, this is your community. Um, and I have some, I, I mean, I have lots to say, I have lots of opinions, but they're mine. Okay, and, and, you know, my job is what my job is. I'm Associate, uh, Associate Superintendent for Support Services for the District, um, which puts me in an opportunity to be in rooms talking about these type things. But make no mistake about it, it's not my property and it's not my decision, it's the board's decision. Now, when we enter those type conversations, my personal mission is to, outside of do the best I can, number one, for the school district and for the students and families of Putnam County schools, um, and to represent the best interests of the board, uh, but, but to do my best for students and communities. Um, but I'm doing all those things to make the best recommendation I can to my superintendent so he can then in turn make a recommendation to the board. Um, so, you know, if you ask me about my opinions on all these things, yes, I have opinions. Um, I think that it's dangerous to leave a school building unattended and just dormant with nothing else for it. Um, you know, I, I, I think students deserve brand new schools. The worst part about that is what do you do with the old school when you build a new school? Um, and, and, you know, a, a good example was pointed out with Central Academy. Um, it's funny thing, the school district does not own Central Academy, the City of Palacka does. So it's a big responsibility when you take over those buildings. Um, we did have it at a time, and it was the bus depot, uh, when it went out of service, you know, as a school. So I don't say all of that to make a point, I just, um, need everyone to understand that it is a board decision, we will take the information that we gather to the board. We have a placeholder, um, next Tuesday for a workshop, but we haven't scheduled a workshop yet. So I'm here tonight just to find out exactly what we need to, uh, number one, go back and talk about as an executive team, uh, and then, you know, maybe have a workshop and, and deliver a recommendation to the board. Our board hasn't heard any of this yet, not formally. They've probably heard bits and pieces from community members, but, um, they, they haven't heard anything formally. Um, so, you know, I, I would ask that you give me some clear direction here tonight to take it back to my board, um, number one, to my boss, my superintendent, and then we can again talk as an executive committee and develop a recommendation, hopefully. We, let me step back and say it like this. I very much want, want something meaningful to happen in Miller Mills School. Um, I, I, I don't see any good that comes from the roof caving in on, on that magnificent facility. Um, it's right in, in downtown Preston City, and again, this is your community. Um, and anything we can do to, you know, help work all of this out, and, and we, we, we don't have unlimited funds. I mean, we can't continue to take care of buildings that don't house students. We're not in the real estate business. Um, we have, you know, no personal stake in hanging on to it. Um, but with that said, it's simply not my building. So, I mean.
Thank you.
Please give us some direction so I can take that, at least if we're having a workshop. Come to you.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
So right now, we have, um, on the table that you asked for the Blue Ribbon Committee to extend through the end of June, is that correct?
Uh, I think, I think till July 30th.
July is, what, you said July?
July 30th, right, that would give them an additional three months, and for the purpose of fact finding, um, funding, putting together, um.
A financial plan.
Yes, a financial plan, that would be it. And obviously, they can't represent us, but, because we have agreed, but they do need to talk to people about that.
And they can talk to people, I just don't want them.
Yeah, I think that's a good point.
Can, can you just say that it's okay you have to use the full three months? They have something good in the works?
Well, um, you know, they're kind of like indentured servants right now. I mean, you know, there's, there's no interest in the whole three months. That would take a long time.
Okay, so any other discussion?
Yeah.
Okay, Melanie, um, Flory, can you do a little? Commissioner Vito?
Aye.
Commissioner Loring?
Aye.
Commissioner Moore?
Aye.
Commissioner Burton?
Aye.
Mayor Myers? Aye. Okay, so moved, um, and approved, and so now we've got to figure out as far as, um, who's gonna represent us? And, Mr. Douglas, um, you said that you were doing this pro bono for the Blue Ribbon Committee, um, is, what are, what are you wanting to, what are you willing to do for the city, for the city? I mean, is that something that you want to carry forward with us?
My, my.
We have a fee, is, we have to know that, too?
My scope of services was very narrowly focused on.
My spoken services was very narrowly focused on a purchase and sale agreement.
Okay.
Just tried to get the ball rolling on that. I was agreeable to donating a bucket of hours. And you have some point, you have to
You're gonna have to start talking to them.
Not knowing that the future may hold, if, right. Is there some reasonable timeframe where if I have to involve additional staff to support the services? Those kind of considerations would come to bear.
So do we want, we've got a meeting coming up on the 13th? It sounds to me like you might need to talk to our city manager. I mean, Commissioner, what do you think? I think Mr. Bowling would like some direction, and I think if we can give him some direction, but also, it looks, it sounds to me like we're gonna have to have, work out some terms of the contract.
Um, Mayor, do you see, well, two, both of those things, I think, are very important. And I guess, it sounds like you're suggesting that we could potentially discuss a contract with Attorney Douglas on the 13th? I think that makes sense. I am, before Mr. Bowling drops back to Palaca, I am really interested in knowing whether he thinks, and what Commissioner Rory thinks, whether it would be productive for that workshop time to take place on March 4th, which I believe is next Tuesday. I have been in meetings with district staff, so I don't know how you would feel about that. Is it the right time for district staff to present something to the school district to be in a meeting and let something be presented? And is that, I'm wondering, is that what he means by direction?
They're gonna have to get counsel too, they're gonna have to secure counsel to represent them.
I mean, by workshop, he's saying it's a workshop, so
Yeah, it's a workshop, and I do talk about that too, as far as
Quite, but saying a workshop, this, this would be, he said they've not been formally briefed, so I guess that would be an opportunity to brief them on what is happening forward.
Right, and I guess what I mean by that is, are you ready to let the Blue Ribbon Committee present to our board? I don't have anything formal to present to them, I don't wanna regurgitate someone else's ideas. I mean, it's, it's really a matter of this commission giving the Blue Ribbon Committee, I guess, the authority to present to our board.
Mayor, do you feel there are the right persons to present? Or should it be our attorney, or should it be you on our behalf? Do we need to talk about that?
Yeah.
Talk about that? Is that how we see this?
Yes, it was, it was our plan for Charlie Douglas to make the presentation to the school board.
But let me extend to add that it was the will of the commission. If you have a direction that you would like to go, we're not here to be dependent on that for us.
Okay, so it just, it seems, it seems to me, and I think this is the sense of the commission, that we, we've been brought up to speed, we've gotten a lot of new information, but it's my understanding that the mayor and Commissioner Burton are not comfortable with the Blue Ribbon Commission presenting something to the school board at this point because we don't have a contract that we feel is
I mean, I don't feel that way at all.
No, okay, I just
The presentation that they made tonight is very good, I mean I just don't want them to present a contract
Yes.
That's what I'm saying, yeah, that the, the plan that was planned, because the contract is not final, and we have not approved a memorandum or a contract. And that that is stuff that needs to be
And I think that if that, I mean, in my opinion, if they wanted to go, they would have to advertise, that would have to be, make sure that we've done that correctly, that we're all gonna be there.
Yes, I understand that.
That's very important that it's done correctly, and that if they present on our behalf, that right now, we are contemplating entering into the understanding or a contract to, to explore the options of that school. I, I think, I'm comfortable with that.
This workshop is informational for this school.
Right, as long as it's, as long as, as
No decisions will be made there.
Well, I know that, but I just want them to understand that we have an agreement to, we have an agreement to the contract, we're still going to have to work on securing the council.
And we need to do the same.
And you need to do the same, so that's what I'm saying.
So I'm gonna ask that we have more than a week to do that.
Would you, do you, do you want to extend that time for your workshop, or do you want to hold the workshop next week?
I don't, that's what I'm saying, I'd like to have time to go back and, for us to have the representation at the workshop.
I think that's, I think on both sides, that's, that's the responsible thing to do.
Are you saying that it might not be on the court?
No, sir, I'm asking that it not be, so we can get representation, because we both depend on Mr. Holmes and
And they're gonna have questions, just like we have, and they're gonna have legal questions that they're gonna have to ask, you know, based on this, so, in fairness to them.
Yeah, second, that makes sense to me.
So right now, where we are is on the 13th, between now and 13th, Mr. Douglas, if you would meet with Mr. Realheart and, and, you know, come up with a contractual agreement in terms, is that correct? Are we, do we need a motion for that? Can I get a motion for that?
March 13th?
Yeah, March 13th.
That's our regular meeting.
That's our regular meeting, y'all can do that, can't do that amount of time.
Okay, so Mayor, you want a motion? Okay, so, and I hope I say this correctly, because I'm kinda hungry.
One thing, a little lar?
Right, so I would move that we authorize Mr. Realheart to work with Mr. Douglas to come up with a contract for representation of the city commission with respect to the matter of acquisition of the Miller Middle School property from the Putnam County School District, and bring that back to us before the meeting on Thursday, 13th of February. I'm sorry.
On March.
I'm sorry, March, yes. Yes, 13th of March, I apologize.
Okay.
Okay, motion will second. Commissioners, we have any further discussion? Okay, clerk, if you do a vocal force, please. Commissioner Navita?
Aye.
Commissioner Rory?
Aye.
Commissioner Moore?
Aye.
Commissioner Burton?
Aye.
Mayor Myers?
Aye. Thank you, I think right now that that's where we are, and then Mr. Douglas can also come back and determine what's the best course of action for us, if it's a review, if it's a contract, you know.
Absolutely, I look forward to that, thank you.
And again, thank you, everyone, and our Blue Ribbon Committee, we've done a stellar job, and we greatly appreciate on behalf of the citizens and the city, thank you for all that you've done.
Thanks for the presentation.
Now, I wanna thank the commission. I know all of you well, and I know your heart is for the city. You don't have personal agendas, and that, that is what I call a great commission, and we thank you.
Commissioners, please have anything further?
Um, I, you know, I would say that, and I'm gonna motion to adjourn. I move that we can turn this special meeting up to the session. On second?
On favor, please say aye.
Aye.